Okay. Call to orders, 7:00 PM. Board of Education.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Nardi, can we have your call, please?
Here.
Here. Recognitions this evening, Dr. Freitas.
Dr. Freitas, why don't we start with the chess? I think we had one student coming up from the play, so if you could start with the chess first.
One hundred percent.
Is that okay?
Of course. Good evening, honorable board members, and here's my favorite part of our Cow meeting. The chess team had another successful year qualifying for the IHSA State Final for the seventeenth consecutive time under the leadership of Mr. Dave Monte. Mr. Dave Monte, not only is he an amazing chess sponsor, he's a great teacher and a fantastic human being, and it's a pleasure to work with him. At the state final, the team finished 2-4-1 at 101st place. Please congratulate the following students and their accomplishments. Students, when I call your name, please come on up. Jack Baird. David Grugliziano. Hang out here for a quick minute, okay? Congratulations. Carl D'Amiglio, Carl? Hey, David, hang on, hang on.
Stand here for a group picture, there we go.
John Free, John? Hey! Congratulations.
Are we off camera now?
Quinton Roner? There he is, there he is. Congratulations. There you go. Adrian Sanchez, Adrian? Nate Smallerick, Nate? David Vaca, David?
Rehearsing the play, sorry. He said he tried.
Dylan Zek, Dylan?
I love these hoodies.
Mateo Gonzalez, Mateo? Come on up, Mateo. Congratulations. Proud of you. And last but not least, Eric Albarrano, Eric? Let's give it up for our chess team, let's give it up. Seventeenth time in a row in six months.
Why don't you guys all move it a little bit? There we go.
All right, guys, let's rock our paws, we've got to rock our paws right here, let's do it.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, everyone. Do we want to leave the speech until someone?
The ma was waiting outside. If the kids are practicing and they can't make it up, they might not be able to come up.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So she might not be coming up.
This is above my piggy.
Okay, let's read it.
Okay.
If she pops back in, we could always reread.
Of course. We would like to recognize now a speech athlete, the RBHS speech team, under the leadership of Ms. Colleen Stanki and Don Leesack, had an exciting year that resulted in one place in second within the category of dramatic interpretation at the Hinzell Central Sectional and a twentieth place finish at the IHSA State Finals held in Peoria last weekend. Please congratulate Kathryn Chikoin on her strong performance this year and for receiving one of the highest sectional scores in Bulldog history.
And Kathryn is currently?
Kathryn is currently rehearsing right now for the musical Grease, and if anybody knows the theater world, right, this is the toughest week right before the show, so.
The show goes on this week, I believe it's Thursday through Sunday.
Correct, Thursday through Sunday.
Thank you, Dr. Freitas. We have visitor statements this evening. Are you here for visitor statements, sir? Anyone? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to reports. Just very quickly, I wanted to mention two things. One, we have, Ms. Ruska is not here this evening, but there are a couple of surveys from IASB that may be of interest to my colleagues. If you haven't seen it, please take the thirty seconds and fill them out on their services. And then the second thing I wanted to mention was, there is the Climate Action Group, C4, so thank you to Dr. Freitas and the administration, the teachers and students who attended the first gathering session in, I believe it was Riverside, a few weeks ago. That's an ongoing process, so I think that's a nice multi-town approach to dealing with climate change issues. Superintendent's report.
Thank you. Below is my summary for my report. I have begun researching communication position after our communication survey that we presented on last month. There are many different options for setting up this position. Community liaison, public relations, director of communications. I've been relying and meeting with some of my colleagues through my networking circles to understand roles and responsibilities better. I've been including updates in my weekly update with more information to follow. The high school had an institute day on Friday, February 17th. The teachers assisted the administration with planning the professional development and wellness sessions. Overall, there was a positive feedback from the staff, so we will continue that trend of involving the staff and through our committee process of setting up our professional development sessions on Institute Day. The Board of Education has approved all four divisional positions now. Ms. Lindquist, AP Curriculum and Instruction, will work with the divisionals throughout the spring as the high school begins to plan teaching and learning initiatives for the next school year. The next phase of the new contract language will be the selection process of teacher leaders for those departments that do not have a divisional. The Board will most likely see those hiring recommendations, I would imagine, in one of the two meetings in April. Dr. Freitas, Ms. Lindquist, and their team will be picking the teacher leaders. Finally, the building administration is finalizing certified staffing, as we always do now in February for next school year. Ms. Lindquist and Ms. Augustine will provide a staffing presentation to the Board in March. I will also have Ms. Augustine and Mr. Baldus attend the meeting to discuss student services intervention and update on panorama, special education, and we have students now signed up for dual credit and dual enrollment with Triton, so those updates will be presented in March. We only have one board meeting in March due to spring break, so we will have a report, kind of a report-heavy meeting in March, the second week of March. Superintendent's Advisory Councils, the Curriculum Council, no new updates. Facility Advisory Council, we met on February 9th. The agenda included in a review of the bid for the upcoming HVAC project, a future project for the cafeteria, which is a coffee bar, we'll discuss that a little later tonight, and a future project for the front of the high school, which is landscape, redoing all the landscaping on Ridgewood Road. That's a tough one to say fast. Finance Advisory Council. The Advisory Council met on February 9th. Also, this agenda included a review of the financial projections, which Dr. Smetana will touch on today in her report, and renewal of the quest contract, which includes some of the coverage of the cost for the potential new coffee bar. And with that, there are no new updates on any of the other committees' personnel policy or purchase, sale, or lease of land. And that concludes my superintendent report for February 28th.
Thank you, Dr. Skink. Is any questions or comments from anyone? No, let's move on then to?
I think we wrecked.
Oh.
Our speech student walked in.
Yes.
Right when I was starting, I'm sorry.
Glad you were able to make it.
You want to cover it again there?
Of course. Good evening, honorable board members. The RBHS speech team, under the leadership of Ms. Colleen Stanki and Don Leesack, had an exciting year that resulted in one student placing second within the category of dramatic interpretation at the Hinzell Central Sectional and twentieth place finish at the IHSA State Final held in Peoria last weekend. Please congratulate Kathryn Chikoin on her strong performance this year and for receiving one of the highest sectional scores in RB history.
Kathryn, congratulations. What role do you have in the musical?
I'm Frenchy.
Oh, boy. Well, this is, I'm sure you've got a lot to get done in the next couple of days, so good luck.
Thank you for stopping by.
And congratulations.
Thank you.
You can stand up and get close.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, congratulations. I didn't even know. Dr. Smetana?
Good evening. Tonight, I'll provide the Board with financial information through the month of January, which represents fifty-eight percent of our fiscal year. I'll begin on Board Book Page Eight, which is our monthly summary report. Total operating revenue for the month was $6,300,624, with eighty-nine percent coming from property tax and CPPRT, six percent coming from federal and state reimbursement, and four percent from state funding, which is our evidence-based funding. The total operating expenditures for the month were $2,467,218, with forty-six percent towards salary and benefits, which is very low, and that's because twenty-one percent this month went towards purchased services, primarily Ladsy, which is our special ed cooperative. That's the payment for the whole year, majority of the payment for the whole year, and then five percent towards special education tuition. Moving on to the monthly financial statements. The summary of fund balances shows that the district's operating funds overall have a positive balance and will continue to use this money to pay bills until spring property tax collection, which will arrive a little late this year in April and May. Normally, that occurs in March. The summary of revenue shows that the district has received forty-nine percent of our budgeted revenue for the year. This amount is a little lower to this time last year, fifty-two percent, due to the delay in the fall property tax, which came in primarily in January and some in December. Normally, by now, we would have gotten all the money that trickled in from the fall collection, and that hasn't happened since the primary collection happened in December and January. So we're still getting that money that's trickling in. The summary of expenditures shows that the district has spent fifty-nine point eight percent of the budgeted expenditures for this year. This amount is pretty similar to this time last fiscal year. And then, as always, I've included for the Board the statement of all the revenues and expenditures from our board accounts for the month, as well as our student activity accounts for the month. I do also have some informational items for the Board tonight. The first is an update on the gas contract. As of November 15th, the lowest gas price was fifty-seven cents a therm, and that was an increase significantly of what we're currently paying, because we had locked in the lowest, market all-time lowest rates at roughly twenty-seven cents a therm. And so, because it was impossible to lock in a rate, the Board gave me the authority to work with our attorney to review contracts in advance to try to lock in the most competitive gas rate. So on January 26th, I was able to lock in a three-year agreement with Constellation for forty-nine cents a therm, plus a $5,000 switching credit on the district's first invoice. And so while it's still an increase, it was a very competitive rate, especially we were able to capitalize on the fact that we had reviewed the contracts in advance, so we were able to take advantage of the market, as well as it had been a warm winter, which certainly helped as well. The next report that I have for the Board is a paid facility rental report, and this is only for quarter two, and this begins on Board Book Page Thirty-three. You can see this only includes the rentals that paid during October 1st through December 31st of 2022. At this time, for that period, we collected $8,343 in revenue and expended roughly $2,110. This amount is lower than this time last year of around $15,000. That doesn't mean that rentals are down as a whole, it just means we collected less. We have one big rental that still hasn't paid that happened during that quarter, and that would make up the money. So of the revenue from this quarter, you can see that sixty-five percent of it came from facility space charges, with the majority of rentals came from the field house, followed by the main gym and the east gym. On Board Book Page Thirty-five, you can see that year-to-date, the district has collected $25,170.75 in rentals and has expended $4,716. The surplus that we receive from rentals is used to offset costs related to the upkeep and maintenance of the facilities. At this time last year, the district brought in $24,183.43, so that's what I'm saying, like, just because this quarter is down doesn't mean rentals are down for the year. And then my last report is in regards to?
Can I have a quick question on rentals? Does that lack of payment factor into our willingness to rent to an entity moving forward?
Yes, there also is a late fine as well, but if they are late, we don't allow them to book future rentals. The problem with this one rental that we're currently seeking payment for is that it's seasonal, so there's no sense of urgency from them.
It would be next?
Right. So.
That's unfortunate.
Yes, we have a procedure in place where we email them every, at minimum, every month to remind them that they are late. Next is our financial projections for fiscal year '24 through '26, along with the assumptions used to create these projections. Begins on Board Book Page Thirty-seven are the assumptions, and then Thirty-eight are the projections. It's really important to note that these projections are just a snapshot in time and subject to the information that we have available at that time. There are a lot of big items that are beyond our control, which I'll touch on, and then there are a lot of items and assumptions that we can play around with, but they don't have a huge significant impact, so there's not a lot of things necessarily that we can do. We can only make these projections based upon the information that we have at this time. So, for example, CPPRT remains at unprecedented levels, and no one knows if and how long it's going to continue. You know, the district used to get around $400,000 from CPPRT, and this year, we're getting 1.2 million, and so that's a big swing. That's hard to project exactly where we're going to land, not only next year, but in future years to come. This year, the district also dropped to Tier One for state funding, which means we get more EBF funding from the state. We don't find that out until April every year, and this could change every year. So typically, we've been Tier Two, this is the first time we've been Tier One, but every year, there's no set cut score. The cut score changes every year, and then they rank schools every year, and then they draw a line. So there's really no way of forecasting whether or not we're Tier One or Tier Two, and that can make a significant impact, depending on how much funding the state gives Tier One. It could be, you know, $300,000 additional dollars, or it could be more, so that's another big swing that we really have no control over. And then finally, last year, we did not project our levy for two years in a row to have five percent. We only had one year at five percent. Now we know that we'll have a second year at five percent as well, and so that information has changed the assumptions. And then also, for the Board's knowledge, you can see that there is a big discrepancy between fiscal year '25 and '26, if you're looking at the projections. And to try to keep this simple, that is because the district has some debt coming off the books, and the way Cook County collects its property taxes is that each spring, they collect fifty-five percent of the prior year tax. Even though we'll have bond payments that are going down $2 million, they don't account for that in the spring collection. They'll correct it in the fall collection, but unfortunately for us, that's a different fiscal year. And so that's why you see that big discrepancy between those two fiscal years. And that wasn't there last year because we just issued new debt that's expiring in two years for our life safety project, and so that could always change too, depending on how our debt changes. So just some things I wanted to call the Board's attention. I'm happy to answer any questions that the Board may have.
Kristen, you think it's possible to do, I think we had a question submitted, maybe a one-pager that I could send out to the Board, or we could add to this packet in the future after we send it out, maybe even include just in the March, since that's in two weeks, like a one-pager just summarizing our debt book? And what I mean by that is, we know, for you and I, we say debt book, that's what we have with Raymond James, but just what bonds are coming off when? I know we have the two-year life safety bonds that we use for the HVAC project, but we also have the large bonds that we refinance, and I'm not sure if we have some other life safety bonds that will be coming due. So if we could just list the different bonds and when they're coming off, and, you know, the money that we'll be collecting in the tax years, you should be able to get that from Ms. Hennessy, but?
That's the same thing we saw before voting on?
Before we actually had the bond in place.
Yes, yeah, correct. Just the one-pager that just summarizes all our debt.
Yep.
Now, it's important for us to look to see if there's opportunities to keep some of our, to refinance some of our debt, so that we keep our, we don't want to close off completely our debt limit.
Correct.
So there's some things that we can look at in the future to do so that the taxpayers receive a break, but we also put the district in a solid position moving forward.
Correct. The other thing to keep in mind is, we are doing a new ten-year life safety study in the fall, and while we don't anticipate anything big, there could be a reason that we need to issue more life safety bonds in the future, depending on what comes out of that ten-year study.
Okay.
And not only does that yellow line in fiscal year '25 show that big bump, but if you look at the very first line, the fund balance goes up, and then it goes down to almost where it was two years before then, so it's not like we're going to be sitting on a lot of extra money because of anything.
Right, it's more of a accounting gear phenomenon. I think that's important to note. Agreed.
And we've seen a lot of that in the last couple of years, so, thank you.
You're welcome. I don't have any additional questions. Anyone else have questions on the presentation? Okay. Can move on to Dr. Freitas and the student advisors. I defer to you how you want to handle this.
Good evening again, honorable board members. Under Teaching and Learning, the five essential surveys update, as of 2/23, our student participation rate is eighty-six percent. I just checked it a few minutes ago, we're actually at eighty-seven percent and trending. We're following up with those students that were absent, that may have been sick, you know, so our goal is ninety-five percent, and when we reach ninety-five percent, we will have all of our points necessary for summative designation. Staff participation rate currently is at fifty-three percent, and parent participation rate is at twenty-one percent. Our teachers are continuing to use the Panorama Dashboard Software System individually and in PLCs with the star data to inform their practice, and our current freshman-on-track rate as of 2/23 is approximately ninety-eight percent. Under School Cultures and Operations, and our superintendent touched upon it, but Institute Day, I want to say, our Spring Institute Day was a big hit. You know, we heard from our staff and from our committee that they want an opportunity to learn from one another. So the morning session, we have many professional sessions, you know, empathy in the classroom, you know, how to support students with dyslexia, best practices, so there were a lot of professional sessions. And in the afternoon, we had enrichment and wellness sessions, you know, how to live to 100, right? Eating healthy by one of our health teachers and educators. So, you know, I'm really proud of Kylie Lindquist, our Assistant President of Curriculum and Instruction, and the staff that came together to make it happen, because the feedback was a very positive one, and I believe we have a template moving forward as we continue enriching our staff. Snowcoming was a hit. I want to say we had almost half of our students here, incident-free, and I want to give a big shout-out to Ms. Jen Royer, President of the Athletic Boosters, because we had the concession stands open, and we heard from students, "We like coming to school, we like hanging out and partying, but we get thirsty, we want to eat," you know? I mean, before, we always had watermelon candy, but we had pizza, we had hot, we had chips, and kids were eating, this is their dinnertime. You know, so again, big shout-out to our Athletic Boosters and President Jen Royer for making that happen. The end of third quarter is coming up in about two weeks, and then Friday, March 10th, third quarter ends. For activities and athletics, Big Band Blast will be Tuesday, March 7th at 7:00 PM in the Little Theater. Our Race and Equity Community Meeting will be held Wednesday, March 8th from 6:30 at 6:30 in Room 201. Our joint council with Hauser and Win Ensemble will be March 9th, 7:00 PM in the auditorium, and our solo ensemble will be Saturday, March 11th at 8:00 AM all throughout the building. That is like state for the music department.
Oh, it's here.
And we are hosting it here. It's an all-day event from 8:00 in the morning till about 2:00 or 3:00 in the afternoon, so there'll be multiple rooms used. That is the music department's state, and again, that'll be open to the public. And that concludes my principal's report. Now I'd like to turn it over to our student advisors to the Board of Education.
Good evening, everyone. Like Dr. Freitas said, the third quarter is coming to a close on Friday, March 10th, and I wish all students good luck in any quarter exams that they might have. Also, for students, but mainly seniors, local scholarships are now open, so some scholarships are specific to a certain sport, subject area, or town, and also a reminder to students to apply to all as soon as possible, as most of these are due by March 10th. A pep rally was held on February 14th for the Winter Dance, Snowcoming, and personally, it was one of my favorite pep rallies of the year and my RB experience, because student engagement was up. And specifically, I really liked the performances by the Hip-Hop Dance Club and the, kind of the involvement of the Minority Empowerment Club. Since it was Black History Month, several students read poems about their experiences at RB as a black person, and I think it's really good that the school is giving underrepresented students a voice in a space that large. And the college planning tips for juniors session will be held on March 15th from 6:00 to 7:00 PM in the auditorium, and spring sports have started yesterday, so good luck to all athletes in their spring seasons. And that concludes my report.
Thank you for the update.
Good evening, everyone. Starting off with Teaching and Learning, seniors who have already committed to a university may need to submit mid-year transcripts, which they can receive through the Student Services Office, and once the school year has officially finished, students and seniors will need to submit a final year transcript that includes both semesters. And then, moving on to School Culture and Operations, the Student Minority Empowerment Club took on the morning and afternoon announcements, educating their fellow students on the history of important African-American historical figures and the importance of Black History Month. In addition to the announcements, last week, the Minority Empowerment Club created a Spirit Week to represent Black history. The Spirit Days included blackout, brownout, black-o'-d-business attire, and the different classes wearing colors corresponding to the Black Liberation Flag, that included red, black, green, and yellow. I would like to thank the members of this club for their amazing spirit during Black History Month, because they demonstrated the importance of celebrating our history and they continue to diversify the school culture. And moving on to Athletics, RB has had a great month of athletics and many parades celebrating our state qualifiers. From the girls gymnastics team, Leah Christensen competed in the vault event, where she placed sixteenth overall. For boys swimming, Drew Rosa competed in the Hundred Butterfly, where he placed fourteenth overall, and he also swam the Hundred Brushstroke, placing fifteenth. And then, spring sports have also begun, like Paulina mentioned, and the girls and boys track teams started our indoor track season.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments for our student advisors?
Asia, is the Wisconsin sweater a signal, symbolizing anything?
I'm going to commit.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Nice job.
Would you, I do have a question regarding transcripts. Would you say most students know how to request those, or how do you find out about how to do that?
There's been multiple emails sent out by the Student Services Office, saying how you can request it from your counselor, so I think most people should have it in their email, but they can just go in there and ask Ms. Engelhardt to have a meeting with their counselor.
Okay.
Thank you very much, ladies.
Good job, ladies.
Up to date on district goals?
I think you heard from Dr. Freitas about, he talked about the teachers using panorama, and again, we'll get an update from Ms. Lindquist and Ms. Augustine. I updated the communication goal, just to show the steps we're taking now in regards to the communication goal, and just updating it from our report that went out to the Board on January 24th and the next steps. The only one that we still don't have any progress on, we're still waiting to hear back from the zoo, is starting that committee, but we're going to sit tight on that until the weather breaks, to see if I could do some walks with some representatives from the zoo and the village, and see if we can begin to, see if there's any room for some changes or some more discussions. Dr. Freitas is still being, is the primary leader for the Delt Committee, which is our district equity leadership team, and that team is set to present at the April Cow.
Correct.
Correct?
We will be presenting our equity action plan. That for implementation in the upcoming school year. So we'll present our plan to the Board of Education in the April Cow.
So let me just ask a question. So theoretically, that's where the Board at that time would then be able to develop the goals for the upcoming school year, based on that report? Is that the goal, or am I getting too into the weeds here?
I think that's, I think that's still going to need more time, because what we're developing is some of the goals that the Delt needs to accomplish in '24, '25, under the district equity goal.
No, I think we're saying the same thing, so that's where these Board goals will come from, from the results from the Delt work?
There could be, but I, help me out here, guys. I think the plan, there's still some more work, it's almost like a two-year process.
Yes, yes. Yes, it is.
So one of the first things we're going to need the Board to do will be like adopting a definition.
So we'll present our plan to the Board of Education in the April Cow.
So let me just ask a question. So theoretically, that's where the board at that time would then be able to develop the goals for the upcoming school year, based on that report? Is that the goal, or am I getting too into the weeds here?
I think that's, I think that's still going to need more time, because what we're developing is some of the goals that the Delt needs to accomplish in '24, '25, under the district equity goal.
No, I think we're saying the same thing. So that's where these board goals will come from, from the results from the Delt work?
There could be, but I, help me out here, guys. I think the plan, there's still some more work. It's almost like a two-year process.
Yes, yes. Yes, it is.
So one of the first things we're going to need the board to do will be like adopting a definition of equity. There's some specific things that we have to do with our, the board will have to take some action on, and then the building team will have to do action over the next two years. So we still have some time to work through this.
Okay, now I look forward to the April report. Thank you.
So I just have one question. So on the '25, that's the committee with the '25 stakeholders, right?
Correct.
I thought we were going to have some community members also. I didn't see in the list.
No, this is specifically for inside the building, and how we're operating our building to make it more inclusive and equity-driven.
Dr. Freitas does have a racial equity group that involves community members.
Correct. That is open, that one is open to the public, you know? And I provide some insights into the work we're doing, but the district equity leadership team is for the stakeholders here in the building, professionals, teachers, administrators.
Okay, and so how do they get feedback from outside the building that they're, you know, kind of meeting that goal, what's expected from the outside?
Well, that's why, as I was stating a little bit earlier, that it's like a two-year process, because there are some surveys that eventually the different strand teams will put out to student body, to parents, different groups that will help us with equity in the building.
Okay. So I was just wanting to-
So they'll get to the guest.
That bridge, yeah.
Correct.
Any more questions, comments on the goals? I think we're on schedule with those. It's good to see the update. Consent agenda, auditor contract renewal. This should be a consent item. Mr. Welch?
The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, takes the following action on the listed consent agenda items. Approves the auditor contract renewal as presented in the February 28, 2023 Board Agenda Packet.
Second.
We have a second from Mr. Van Horse. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Gerken?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Van Hood?
Yes.
Mr. Welch?
Yes.
And Ms. Salas?
Yes. Do we have any old business under life safety items, capital improvements, or sustainability updates today?
No, no, I think we're scheduled for March to do our in-person meeting to plan out the schedule for the summer. Is that correct, Kristen?
Correct, March 14th.
So no new updates.
Okay, thank you. New business, we have the student registration fees for '23, '24. It's a first read.
Dr. Smetana?
So every year, I bring to the board the list of registration fees and my recommendation for the upcoming year. At this time, I'm recommending that everything, all the fees stay flat for the '23, '24 school year.
I think there were no questions submitted on this, so we can move this to the consent calendar for next meeting, if that's good with everyone?
Good over here.
Okay, we're all comfortable with that. Thank you very much for your work on there. And this next one's a larger item, the Quest Contract First Read.
So Quest has been the food service provider for RB staff and students for the past 14 years. The administration's been very happy with our level of service and quality of food that Quest provides. For example, Quest was instrumental in assisting RB with providing free lunches to students through a grant during COVID-19 pandemic. And they also seamlessly transitioned back to in-person service during a time when staffing challenges were very difficult to overcome in the service industry, and they were, they did not miss a beat in that transition. In addition to providing RB with food service, we have a contract with Quest to allow them to use the kitchen to provide food service to satellite schools, '92 and a half, '94, and District '95, for which we receive commission for. So the proposed five-year contract extension includes Quest building a coffee or snack bar and a student cafeteria that would be available to students before and after school. Currently, the only time students can purchase food from the cafeteria is during lunch periods, and then there's limited service for breakfast as well. So this would be more expansive, and it'd also be a great opportunity for students to get some food if they were staying after school for clubs or activities or sports. Quest would cover the cost of installing the coffee and snack bar, which are estimated around $100,000. And that includes not only the construction, but all of the equipment that needs to go in there as well. The exciting part is that we would be able to work with Quest to provide students in our special education work program with opportunities for jobs throughout the day that would not otherwise be possible to them, because we'd be able to work with Quest to meet the requirements for that. Both the facilities and advisory councils have discussed this proposal at our February meetings. I just heard back from district's legal council, which reviewed the contract. There is no associated cost, out-of-pocket cost for us, because approximately on an annual basis, we receive, depending on the year, around $115,000 to $125,000 in revenue from Quest. And that not only includes the commission that we receive, but also the commission that we receive from the three satellite districts that we have.
So will we need a separate operating agreement, once the coffee bar is open, to allow students to work there, or does this cover it?
It's a good cover. Good question. I would think we need to, we'll need to talk with legal, as well as our insurance provider, to see if those students are technically employees of Quest during that time. Very similar to how the students that participate in our work program are ready through transition and special ed. So we would need to see if it's something Quest needs to sign up through our special ed program, become as like a place of employment.
Provider, yes, they will. But I will touch base with the president of Quest to see if he wants to put that in his contract.
I'm sure they've done something similar at other schools.
Yes, yeah, they were the ones who suggested it, because right now, for example, we have some of our special education students that make coffee in Keurigs, and then go around and deliver it to staff as part of their job, but that doesn't count as an official job. And so Quest would be able to, we would, the staff would order the coffee through Quest, and the students can either help deliver it and/or make it, depending upon their skill set.
But they would be considered an employee of Quest? However that works through our work program.
I mean, we're, how many months away from actually opening the coffee bar? Six, nine?
Yes.
Ten months?
We got time.
There's time. And also, I would think that students would want to be aware of that. You guys are going to miss out on this. We're sorry. The hours of operation, right? Is it Monday, Wednesday, Friday? Is it Monday through Friday? Just so that there was some uniformity to it.
So we have, we have several things that we've kind of verbally planned out. The first is that the coffee farms are operated by women in another country, and some people from Quest are going to visit there in early March. And so we're working with our Girl Up organization, student organization that we have here, and they'll be able to Skype with them and learn more about what they do, because Girl Up is all about empowering women in third world countries and in the United States as well. So they're very excited about that. And then one of the editors in Clarion is on that group, so I've talked to the Girl Up sponsor about possibly writing a Clarion article. And then as a follow-up, we every spring do a tasting that I coordinate with Quest, where we get student feedback on how the cafeteria is operating, as well as food, and they get to learn more about Quest. And we're going to have a tasting of some of the things that'll be in the coffee bar then. And then we also talked about having like a naming competition or suggestions or something. So all of that will happen, hopefully, in the spring, to get students aware of this and get them excited about what's to come next year.
Was there any talk of any additional satellite schools, potentially?
Not at this time, no.
Okay. And then, in six or nine months and a year, do you think we should start looking at, like, our equipment and how old it is, now that all these other schools are depending on this building that we don't want? We should probably have some ideas how old our equipment is.
Would that be part of the capital assessment, or is?
It would be part of the life safety, it'd be an internal.
Yeah.
It's part of like-
It's a good point, though.
Right.
Because remember, when electricity went out, we lost a lot of food. It was just because of electricity, but if some component of providing meals to the satellite schools goes down, that wouldn't be good.
We just replace, what do we just replace?
The dishwasher. And so I was going to bring that up. So, you know, yes, the equipment is expensive, so getting a sense of the life expectancy, yes, of that equipment probably would be helpful, because the dishwasher alone, I think, was like $38,000.
Wow.
That's nicer than the one I have at home.
Yeah, refrigerators don't last forever either.
Correct.
We do, I would say Airmark does a really great job of trying to find parts and, you know, constantly fixing them in the most cost-efficient way. But I know the dishwasher had not been touched in, I think, like 30, something crazy, like it wasn't touched during the renovation, had been there forever, and parts were no longer an option. So I think that's a good idea.
Any more questions or comments on that, or should we move it to consent for next meeting? Is everyone comfortable?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. Visitor statements, second opportunity? Okay. Thought I'd make the offer again, though, since you are sitting through. Discussion items, I might have skipped this earlier in the agenda. Do we have any additional discussion items from anyone? We can add it right now. Seeing none, any consideration of items for future meetings from any board members? Seeing none, we'll move on to matters for closed session, which will include appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body, student discipline, individual student matters, purchase, sale, or lease of real property, probable imminent or pending litigation, collective negotiations, and school safety.
The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, enters closed session for the purpose of considering the closed session matters as presented in the February 28, 2023 Board Agenda Packet.
Second.
You have a second from Ms. Locke, and we do need a roll call, please.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Slack?
Yes.
Mr. Van Hood?
Yes.
Mr. Welch?